Okay. I'm going to call this order. This meeting of the Arundel Planning Board is going to begin at 7:30 p.m. 2008 at 7:01 p.m. We'll start with a roll call.
Yay, Marty.
One again.
Jamie Lowery.
Roger Moran.
Rich Kanon.
Jens Bergen.
Susan Roth.
Dan Redwood.
We have approval of agenda. On the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for November 29, 2018. There's a space for citizen comment, pending applications. We are going to be reading the findings of fact and conclusions of this decision for the PaveTech contract yard. Then we will address zoning ordinance revisions, a review of the land use ordinance section 5.11, noise standards for all uses in, for uses in all districts. Item 2, organization of the districts, a review of the organization of districts by principal use. Item 3, a review of inconsistencies in the land use ordinance 9314, contract yards, and then any other business that you gentlemen care to provide.
And please.
And please, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I take it as a collective us.
It's a guys.
It's a guys, it's okay.
Yay.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
The minutes are available for.
We don't have the minutes.
Minutes are not available, we will.
Yeah, but it's still on the agenda. We can hear a.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. We'll move it off after. Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the agenda.
Yay.
Yay.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. That being said, when we get to the approval of the minutes, we will table those for the next meeting. Which is now, by the way. It's the approval of the minutes.
A motion, we table them until next meeting. You have a chance to read them.
Motion has been made to table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Citizen comment. Anybody that has a comment to make about an item that is not on the agenda. Hearing none, we will move straight on to pending applications. The findings of fact and conclusions and a notice of decision for PaveTech Corporation, major conditional use permit application. Whereas the Arundel Planning Board granted William and Star Stilpin a one-year conditional use permit on April 16, 2003, to operate a paving business at the parcel 37 lot 8A off of Stilpin Way in the then rural residential district. The planning board imposed a series of conditions on the permit, including limiting the parked fleet of over-the-road construction vehicles to two dump trucks and two equipment trailers, restricting the vehicle idling time to no more than 15 minutes, and mandating business vehicles to start no earlier than 7:00 a.m. And whereas on May 13, 2004, the Arundel Planning Board granted a permanent conditional use permit for the paving operation, given the applicant's demonstrated compliance with the restrictions and limitations of the April 16, 2003 permit. And whereas on April 13, 2017, the applicant was cited by codes enforcement officer for violating the 2003 conditional use permit conditions by exceeding the limitations on the number of vehicles parked on the site, as well as for the operation of a state-licensed medical marijuana caregiver production facility without obtaining a conditional use permit from the town of Arundel. And whereas on June 13, 2017, and June 21, 2017, the applicant entered into consent agreements with the town of Arundel to remove from the site all vehicles except those prescribed in the 2003 conditional use permit, and to remove the medical marijuana caregiver production facility from the property. The applicant also agreed to obtain a conditional use permit for the operation of Contract Yard 2 before any additional road vehicles could be parked on the site. And whereas on June 22, 2017, the Arundel Planning Board received a conditional use pre-application for the operation of Contract Yard 2 on the existing site. And whereas on July 8, 2017, the planning board conducted a public site walk of the proposed project site. And whereas on July 13, 2017, the planning board informed the applicant what submission requirements would be required to apply for Contract Yard 2 license. And whereas on July 13, 2017, the planning board received a major conditional use application for the operation of Contract Yard 2, limited to four dump trucks and trailers and associated equipment. And whereas on August 9, 2018, the planning board determined that PaveTech Corporation's major conditional use application was complete in accordance with the town of Arundel Land Use Ordinance, section 10632. Whereas in conformance with the land use ordinance section 10633, the planning board conducted a public hearing on August 23, 2018 with continuance to September 13, 2018, to permit extended public comment. And whereas on October 11, 2018, the planning board granted the applicant a 30-day extension to provide legal substantiation for noise easements purchased by the applicant from the Butters and intended to serve as a noise mitigation measure. And whereas on November 8, 2018, the planning board granted the applicant a 30-day extension to prepare and submit designs for physical sound attenuation barriers to meet the requirements of land use ordinance section 5111. And whereas on November 29, 2018, the planning board conducted deliberations to consider and determine whether the applicant met governing performance criteria for the proposed Contract Yard 2 under the land use ordinance. Now therefore, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact. Findings of fact number one, the owner of the property is Wilfens, William Stilpin, and the applicant is PaveTech Corporation. Number two, the property is located at Stilpin Way in the R4 district, but are no shoreland zoning districts on or directly adjacent to the proposed site. Number three, PaveTech has a valid conditional use permit issued in 2003 and 2004 to operate a paving business on the site with roadworthy equipment restricted to two dump trucks and two trailers and assorted paving equipment such as paver sidewalk pavers, rollers, and hand tools that can be carried on the trailers and trucks. Number four, the applicant proposes to increase PaveTech's fleet site over the limits of the 2004 conditional use permit by an additional two dump trucks and trailers, excuse me, and associated equipment. These vehicles were parked and have operated on the site prior to the submission of this permit application since June 2017, but have since been removed in compliance with a notice of violation issued by the code enforcement officer and the June 13, 2017 consent agreement with the town of Arundel. According to land use ordinance section 93144A, contract yard 2 operations are permitted in the R4 district as conditional uses. The applicant's proposed layout of parking and storage areas on the site is in compliance with the space and bulk requirements of land use ordinance section 6103. The applicant provided a noise study prepared by S.E. Ambrose, audiologist, dated July 24, 2018, with revisions and mitigation measures through to November 16, 2018, which asserts that the proposed four dump truck fleet can ingress and egress the site without violating the 60 dB maximum sound pressure of land use ordinance section 5111 for a mixed-use district as measured at the southern property line during the hours from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The same study contends that the noise from all four trucks operating at the same time will exceed the 60 dB maximum for the 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. operation, along with northern and eastern boundary lines unless traffic flow is restricted to two trucks ingressing or egressing the site at one time. A critical study prepared for the Butters to the proposed site by Ascentec of Cambridge, Massachusetts, and dated November 28, 2018 disputes S.E. Ambrose's conclusion on the following basis. A, its review of only idling rather than moving trucks. B, the Butters' observance of larger trucks visiting the site in the past than were subject to the noise study. C, the inconvenient and impractical restriction of a two-truck-at-a-time ingress-and-egress protocol. And D, challenging the 250 Hz attenuation properties of the proposed noise barrier given its mass, sound reflectivity, and gaps between timber slots.
Slats.
Hmm? Slats. Slats, timber slats, sorry. Thank you. In a response dated November 29, 2018, and through the project engineer, S.E. Ambrose countered that the standard professional practice excludes the sound of moving registered-over-the-road vehicles from operational noise assessments. The noise study is based on the actual fleet of PaveTech trucks, not on anecdotal information from the Butters. No complex choreography is required for the vehicles to leave, and the trucks rarely return in tandem. The 250 Hz attenuation for wood walls represents the least effective value for the material, and the reflective sound would be dispersed by distance, natural dispersal, and vegetation. S.E. Ambrose concludes that there would be no gaps between the fence slats, and a correction will be made on the detail. In addition, S.E. Ambrose notes that Ascentec are architectural, not outdoor acoustical designers who have not visited the site or its environments and are unfamiliar with sound in natural environments related to construction industrial equipment. Ascentec responded to S.E. Ambrose's November 29 response submitting his resume to address questions about Mr. Markham's credentials. He indicated that in addition to interior acoustics, he is also an expert regarding environmental outdoor noise projects. Mr. Markham's resume also noted that he is a visiting professor at many institutions of higher learning, including MIT, Harvard, and Cornell. Ascentec noted that the noise standards in the ordinance must not only account for idling trucks, but also for loading and unloading activities and vehicular movements, as opposed to simply idling, which were not accounted for in S.E. Ambrose's calculations. He noted how the Butters have seen larger PaveTech vehicles on the proposed site than what were subject to the noise testing. Ascentec also challenged the assumptions and accuracy of S.E. Ambrose's calculations regarding the true noise attenuation impact of the proposed sound barrier. Taken together, Ascentec concluded that the noise likely to have been generated by PaveTech's expanded operations is likely louder than S.E. Ambrose predicted and likely to exceed the noise limits under the land use ordinance noise standards. Although the applicant has secured noise easements from the Butters to the east and the north to grant the applicant the right to project sound pressures exceeding the decibel limits of land use ordinance 5111, the town attorney has advised the planning board that these easements do not eclipse or abrogate the requirements of the land use ordinance section 5111, which requires that sound be measured at the property line. The applicant has conducted a groundwater test of three wells on the PaveTech property prepared by Nelson Analytic Lab and dated June 25, 2018, indicating no evidence of groundwater contamination from the parking site. Documentation provided by the applicant includes site plans prepared by Atlantic Resource Consultants dated August 2017 with revisions through to June 25, 2018. Wetlands delineation and assessments prepared by Longview Partners Wetlands Consultants. Noise impact assessment prepared by S.E. Ambrose and dated November 16, 2018. Conformance with Contract Yard 2 criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has concluded as follows with respect to whether the applicant's proposed expansion has demonstrated compliance with land use ordinance section 93144B, performance standards of a Contract Yard 2. Number one, all parking and storage areas will be visually blocked from both the street and abutting properties by a solid fence, earth barrier, and/or vegetative planting that at the time of installation shall not be less than eight feet in height. We conclude that with the imposition of an appropriate condition requiring fencing, this standard can be met because the proposed parking lot storage area in the northeast corner of the site will be visually blocked from adjacent properties. This requirement is also met because pavers and other equipment shall be stored on trailers in the existing storage barn and/or in the storage trailer. Number two, that any storage yard.
Do we need to make a motion for each of these?
No, we've already voted on all of these. We're ready to get it all into the record.
I'm sorry.
Number two, that any storage yard illumination shall consist of shielded downlight fixtures and shall not shed more than .1 lumens at the property line and .05 lumens at the boundary of any residential property. We conclude that this standard is met because there is no additional site lighting of the parking lot proposed by the applicant. Number three, all materials likely to produce odors, dust, debris, or similar nuisances shall be contained either within an enclosed structure or container or in a manner in which these nuisances shall not adversely impact adjacent properties. We conclude that this standard is met because all liquid bituminous materials and solvents associated with the proposed use will be kept in existing storage ponds or trailers. Number four, equipment and material storage are prohibited from location in the lot front, side, or rear setbacks. We conclude that this standard is met because the site plan shows that no equipment will be parked in the front, rear, or side setbacks of lot 8A. Number five, parking. One parking space shall be provided for each employee and one parking space for every 300 square feet of showroom or customer office space. One additional handicapped parking space shall be provided for customer use. We conclude that this standard is met because PaveTech will have less than 10 employees, but more than 10 parking spaces are provided for employees parking on the site. Number six, a fuel containment system shall be installed surrounding any above-ground fuel storage tanks, and oil and water separators shall be installed to prevent runoff from such containment structures and onsite vehicle and equipment fueling locations. We conclude that this standard has been met because no above-ground fuel storage tanks are proposed on the site. Conformance with conditional use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board concluded as follows with respect to whether the applicant's proposed expansion has demonstrated compliance with the conditional use permit performance criteria under land use ordinance section 929. 9291, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring properties. We conclude that this standard has been met. The record evidence established that while the neighborhood is largely residential, there are other businesses located there, including the Red Apple Campground, as well as various home occupations and the log yard, which uses are specifically allowed under the land use ordinance in the mixed-use R4 district. 9292, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and anticipated future development of the neighborhood. We conclude that this standard has been met because the comprehensive plan specifies that the R4 district is to serve as a mixed-use district in the future, supporting a mixture of residential, forestry farming, and resource-based industries such as gravel pits, quarries, and log yards, and contractor operations such as contractor yards. 9293, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. We conclude that this standard has been met because the proposed use will not result in significant trip generation, and the proposed plan will reduce pedestrian-vehicle conflicts on the property. No changes are proposed to occur to driveway access or internal circulation. 9294, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. We conclude that this standard has been met because the operation will not place any demands on existing onsite septic or water supplies. 9295, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibrations, or smoke generated by uses that will adversely affect neighboring properties. We conclude that this standard has not been met. While we find that the proposed use will not generate undue amounts of glare because no additional lighting is proposed, odor because all bituminous materials and solvents are proposed to be kept in storage units, and all vehicles and equipment will be cleaned off-site, or dust because the proposed use does not produce undue amounts of dust, based on the record evidence, we conclude that the amount of noise that will result from the proposed use will adversely affect neighboring properties. We had credible testimony, both in person and in writing, from direct the Butters and nearby residents that even at its current level of operation, the applicant's existing use has adversely impacted the Butters and residents in the general vicinity. The current application proposes to increase the current fleet by an additional two dump trucks, along with associated trailers and equipment. The addition of more vehicles will result in the increase of existing noise levels generated by the proposed use. Testimony from neighbors in conjunction with evidence submitted by Ascentec leads us to conclude that the additional noise that will be generated by the proposed use would adversely affect neighboring properties and is likely to exceed the decibel limits established in the land use ordinance. 9296, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slopes, soils, drainage, and vegetative cover, are suitable for the proposed use. We conclude that this standard has been met because the applicant is proposing no expansion of existing parking areas or structures on the site. Therefore, there is no anticipated impact to existing slopes, vegetative covers, soils, or increased stormwater drainage from the site. Moreover, the applicant proposes to use DEP-approved, non-hydrocarbon-based solvents to degrease paving equipment, and proposes to do all such cleaning only on the job site. 9297, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. For reasons stated above, we conclude that this standard has not been met. The noise generated by the existing use is of such a nature, duration, or and/or amount that it has interfered with the neighbor's quiet enjoyment of their property. The proposed use, which will involve additional vehicles, will likely increase the amount of noise and further negatively impact neighbor's quiet enjoyment of their properties. 9298, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. We conclude that this condition has been met. Other than the performance standards specified above and the particular concerns identified by the Butters regarding noise and whether the use is an appropriate fit for the particular neighborhood, no other performance criteria are indicated nor have any other concerns been expressed. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby denies the major conditional use application of PaveTech Corporation to operate a Contract Yard 2 on the site identified as tax map 37 lot 8A. The original vote to deny the application was made on November 29, 2018, with these written findings being reviewed and adopted on December 13, 2018. Under section 9211 of the land use ordinance, decisions of the planning board on conditional use applications are not appealable to the Arundel Board of Appeals, but may be appealed to the Superior Court pursuant to MRCP 80B. And now we need to sign it, those of us that were here.
Question.
Yeah, Marty.
If for some reason, okay, we have the binding of the fact that these are stated now, if for some reason, if the applicant can come back and prove that the noise and everything else would be not a nuisance, he would have to reapply for a new application, am I correct?
That is correct. He would have to submit a new application and provide all of the documentation showing that he can beat the noise ordinance.
But I mean, because there was question of the two professionals, we'll call them. Okay. One said yes, one said no. But the other thing was too, that the barriers were not put up yet or anything else to be actually tested along the way. I'm just inquiring on a question, that's all.
Yeah, he would have to come back.
And prove it.
And prove it. Basically, that's the whole issue.
Yeah.
At the meeting, his expert was not here and could not prove.
Correct.
Otherwise, if.
Neither was the other one, it was only in paper. Both of them were only in paper.
And it cast enough doubt to raise questions of credibility, so if they want to, if he wants to resubmit, he can do so, and he can come up with the appropriate documentation to indicate that the sound will not exceed the standards that are applied.
I'm just asking for clarifications. Do we need a new copy?
No, Roger signed below his name on the blank line, so I don't think this.
Jim, do you need to, does the board need to concur or make a motion to confer that this is a true and accurate copy of your best report?
That's a really good question. I don't know.
I think you would.
You can't hurt to do it.
Okay.
I think that would be appropriate.
I'll still move.
You can't. You can't. It has to be.
I still move. Jamie, go ahead.
Jamie moves, and Susan seconds for the five of us that were there. Is there any discussion or disagreement?
No.
All those in favor that indicate that this is an accurate record, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is the record copy?
Then here's the signed record copy. Okay.
Need a drink?
Yes.
Hey, did well on that.
Very well.
Did a good job.
Doesn't well enough, and none of us have to do this. Remember the chairman can delegate.
I can delegate. The next time I'm.
Why would you delegate? When you're doing so fine.
Give it off to the nearest lawyer.
Yeah.
Jens is going to move to another town and go, I'm not the closest lawyer anymore. Okay. A review of the land use ordinance. Could I have my red folder?
You sure can.
Of the land use ordinance section 511. Remember, we had this discussion in the middle of that tempestuous event. Really weird. On page 50 in the ordinance, 111. The maximum permissible sound pressure level of any continuous, regular, or frequent source of sound. 511, one, on page 50. And there was quite a bit of discussion of all the around regular. And continuous is fairly obvious. And I think frequent would be fairly obvious here. Regular. According to the town attorney, you start your trucks up at 7:00 in the morning and drive off the property, and that you do that every day, that's regular. So I think having regular here creates a problem.
Why? I'm just curious.
Because the concept of you're starting your trucks and driving away, and you come back at 3:00 in the afternoon for that to be regular. Yes, it is regular, but I don't think that that's a noise problem. Unless we want to start telling people who drive Ford F-350s just as their little play toys that you can't drive your truck off your property without creating a nuisance.
But regular could mean other things other than leaving in the morning and coming back in the afternoon.
I will admit that that is the extreme situation.
Right.
But that is the issue that I think it generates. At what point do we?
It's a serious problem.
But you can have a generator that regularly recycles twice a day or three times a day.
Which is why regular becomes a problem. Are we going to tell people they cannot have instant-on generators that test every day at the same time?
No, but I think regular being there, I tend to agree with Susan in that it casts that net that captures frequent noises, right? If you're generating that noise on a regular basis, then it should fall under that. And we have a provision to allow for shorter durations.
15 minutes?
Right. In which you can, could exceed that. Now, that's the issue, you know, if we're looking to keep out the short-term exceedances, then maybe that's what we need to address.
Okay. What if they're on short term? I'll give you an example. Haying your field, mowing your lawn, cutting up your wood.
But that would be more frequent, right?
Are they regulated activities?
You do it every Sunday. Every Sunday.
Are they regulated activities?
There's nothing that says regulated activities.
Which frequent mean?
Frequent and regular are different insofar as frequent means that it happens often, but not necessarily on a regular schedule. Do you know?
And they're both modified, or at least certainly regular is modified, and arguably frequent is modified by the use of the word continuous, which we can't ignore.
Continuous we can.
And so, they're almost all permutations of different levels of use, and it sort of is a blanket, you know, way of covering.
Question along the way.
But I will contend, I will contend at the same time, it's extremely dangerous because it can be used in just about any kind of activity. I will tell you that probably this, if we were to say regular, a regular sound, we're going to put a lot of businesses and a lot of actual homeowner activities in jeopardy. Because regular is not defined well. It can be, it's such a loose term, it can be used for just about, you can apply it to just about any situation. And I think under these circumstances, we might want to take a little bit stronger view of defining what regular would be. I bring up the log yard thing because we have log yards, and people who regularly cut their wood, usually on weekends, that's a regular thing. They have them, we have log yards that actually. We have log yards that actually run regularly during the summer months. And I'm not sure that if they regularly operate on weekends, regularly operate from 2:00 to 4:00. Does that, do those activities now, if they exceed these limits, do these activities now have to cease?
Well, but the only term in those three that is specific is continuous. So frequent is also vague, because what constitutes a frequent activity? It's just as vague as regular. So we might want to define, you know, give a little bit of a definition to both regular and frequent without overdoing it. Does that make sense?
I think we have to explore that. Because right now, just so you know, this is the language that DEP uses. We did not invent this language. This language, and in fact, in these folders that I've provided all of you, this includes not only the state language and review processes that the state of Maine and DEP expects us to do, and that they use themselves, but it also addresses some of the issues of frequency. Not well enough, but it does start addressing the issues of.
But here's the slippery slope with that. And that is, in all the reading of all the different town ordinances of our neighbors, you know, some of these things are deliberately nonspecific or vague. And so that they can be decided, determined on a case-by-case basis. And they give you some flexibility. It's almost as if, you know, there are things in the Constitution that are ill-defined on purpose. And they're left open to discussion precisely to give, you know, the ordinance some level of flexibility. And so I think if we jump into making things too definitive, we put ourselves in a box and don't leave ourselves any real flexibility to decide things, you know, on a case-by-case basis. So I respectfully disagree with.
I agree with that assessment for the word frequent. For the word regular, when the town attorney sits next to me and she says, yes, starting your trucks up every morning and driving away is a regular use according to the sound ordinance, I think we need to take the word regular out.
I don't think so. I think when it's a nuisance, maybe we take it out. But then there's a legal definition to the word nuisance as well, so.
But this is the ordinance.
It's a lot of it's every Saturday and Sunday, not the weekday.
And the flip side, the flip side. I know it. And that's why I don't think it should be here. Because I think having regular, you can establish a regular pattern doing something once a week. I go to church on a regular basis. I go every Sunday morning at 9:00.
But can something frequent be regular? Is this a rhombus and a square?
Here's the question to turn out and throw out is, on a regular basis or anything else, us who live on this side of the town, we have trains, and they come through. And they do make noise, and everything else along the way, okay? But we have no control over. For another thing, here's another perfect example. On a regular basis or anything else, which has just been struck down by some happy landowner for being a bitch, okay? Was the foghorn light down at Cape Porpoise. It bothered him, but when it was foggy, the horn always signaled. Because it aids navigation. Because he decided to move here and it bothered him. Now they can't turn on and have the foghorn going unless you have radio signal to turn the foghorn on when you're lost somewhere.
I think we should take it under advisement and ask the town attorney about eliminating one of the three terms. Because can something that's frequent also be regular?
No.
I'd like to add.
I think it's a fine.
I think it's very.
Real problem is an overlap.
So.
No, it's rhombus and square.
I think we have to be careful how much effort we'll be putting into this.
A square is always a rhombus, but a rhombus is necessary.
These are definitions that would be very difficult to make clear. And we could spend years on this and not be any further along than we are right now. I think these have, this definition or this paragraph has served us quite well. There haven't been too many issues of noise, as far as I can recall, that could be solved by splitting hairs on this. I think we can get so defined on this that we'll be creating more problems for us down the road.
I totally agree.
I'll tell you, this is an enforcer. One of the enforcers in this town, this is an incredible problem.
Well, maybe.
Why is that?
So elaborate Ted.
Regular, as I said, I can get anybody on a regular use. Do mowing your lawn for two hours on a Sunday exceeds a 15-minute decibel level at the property line?
Is that continuous?
Might be continuous, yeah. Might be continuous to do, is it continuous? Continuous strikes me as being always the same sound or occurring for very prolonged periods of time. Log splatter. And that's one of the problems. It's a very slippery, well, let me finish. Let me answer your question. I think it's, we have to realize that when you have a term like regular, from an enforcement standpoint, you can come up with just about a regular anything. And the problem is, now we're getting into the slippery slope of arbitrary and capricious interpretation of the word. And that's where our greatest danger is going to come from. It's, what you do in this case, why don't we do it in other cases? Why don't we do it with all the other contractor units? Why don't we do it with all our log yards? And I will guarantee you, I can even get a Rundle machine, which is, as you probably know, only about 40 feet away from the property line. I can get Rundle machine, even though the property line's out in the middle of nowhere. That property line, it may exceed that various times with some regular activities. Families can have regular trips in which they have a motorcycle.
They don't need a motorcycle. They have a live van.
So what is the recourse for someone who has a complaint lodged against them for regular or frequent activity? And what is that individual's recourse to dislodge that complaint or nullify that complaint or neutralize? Yes, how does one defend, do they come to the planning board?
No, they first start with the enforcement officer. That's who enforces this ordinance. Usually I get dragged into it too. And my first problem is that, you know, we have to have a meter. We basically have to do sound measurements to verify a peril. Now, we don't have the equipment to do in the first place.
Now, question is also on your noise. Is it the same thing as odor?
Yes, it is the same thing as odor. There are measurements, there are measuring sticks. Odor can be measured.
Can you give us some specific examples? Not necessarily by name, but examples of the noises that have come to your attention?
Right.
Or gems?
Log yards, sawmills, rabbits.
That have been there for a long time or new uses?
Doesn't matter. This ordinance doesn't say anything about how long the use has been, whether it's a new use, whether it's a use that's been 50 years.
Maybe that's part of the issue, number one. Number two, maybe with the insertion of a, listen, it's not a very creative term, but it's a very useful term, any unreasonably continuous, regular, or frequent.
What about animals?
The issue with the terminology becomes the fact that it's arbitrary and capricious. Who decides that that's unreasonable?
Well, unreasonably generally, that word is used to objectify things.
I agree that it is, but I think it becomes, and personally, I mean, I brought it up. I'm not looking at continuous or frequent. I think my problem is with the word regular. What do you do with the guy who mows his lawn every Sunday afternoon? Or the guy who has firewood and he splits it all summer long Friday evening?
What about the guy who mows his lawn at 3:00 in the morning?
That's unreasonable.
That's outside.
And that's why it worries.
But that's not a problem. But it's not a problem because it's, but from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, if he's doing it at 3:00 in the morning, he's already violating.
Okay, so if he does it every night at 9:45?
That strikes me as unreasonable.
It does, but it also strikes me as regular. And to me, that's, the regular is the problem.
So.
How about an animal that rooster, like crows every morning?
You can stick him in a pot and have chicken.
That sounds great.
But no, I mean, but it's a regular basis that he talks to you.
So continuous, the definition of continuous is forming an unbroken hole without interruption, unceasing, uninterrupted, unbroken, constant, ceaseless, and incessant. So let's see what regular is. So we all know what continuous is now.
And I could make the argument that there is no continuous activity that would generate that noise that occurs inside the town of Arundel. Because even to Marty's point, even the terrain is not continuous. It is definitely frequent.
Right, because regular means that you've established a definitive pattern.
Yep.
Okay, especially with the same space between individual instances.
Foghorn.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Foghorn wouldn't be though, because a foghorn only goes off when there's fog.
I think there's a reason why the state of Maine has it the way it is.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
We should use it as a fallback until they change it.
The state of Maine says it's gospel, to be honest with you. But, you know, I understand what you're saying. The reason why they say that is because it gives them a lot of flexibility.
Right.
Making interpretation. And, but the thing is, what they also do, what we need to do is we need to look at the reduced standards because they start going into a little bit more detail on what some of these things are. See, ours is noise ordinance light, if you will. And they simply say it's done for the purposes of making it easy for municipalities. They're looking at municipalities everywhere. Probably not municipalities that have a bank of enforcement officers or the technical capability to be able to have a team of people go around and do this. So any group, for instance, a Gormtum Medibex, they would basically have a standard that would be easily determined and relatively easily measured, and very simple. And when DEP gets involved in it, it's a lot more complex.
So I have a question. So Ambrose said in their assessment of the noise that they only really had to measure or calculate the noise created by an idling truck or machine.
That's what he said.
And Essentec argued that that was an incorrect interpretation of the statute. And that both the egress and ingress of the trucks, in addition to the idling, should be considered when assessing the noise. So why is there a disparity in the manner in which these two professional companies have interpreted the noise statute? What is the noise statute? Is it idling and ingress and egress? Or, you know, how did one arrive and read the statute? One way to argue it, and I would say, you know, we're back to the circumlocution office, or does the truck have to be measured, coming, going, and idling in order, and all sorts of noise taking place on the lot to, you know, be all rolled into one assessment of noise? So, you know.
This is for example.
Yes, but I mean, why was it, why were they able to argue both sides of the coin? Is it that vague?
Because that's what consultants do.
Yes, well, we're back to.
That's like lawyers and their opinions.
If you, to answer that question, one of the reasons I think Ambrose did is because Ambrose recognized that vehicles, usually vehicle noise, and especially vehicles that are in transit, especially on roads, are regulated by MDOT, or by the state, MDOT, or Federal Highway Administration. Those noise standards. And the noise enforcement on roads is that. Now, this is a private road. There, does the same enforcement apply in those circumstances? That's why he made the reference to in motion. So I think he was looking at it from that.
Essentec was.
No.
Well, Ambrose was.
Ambrose was saying, once they get underway, that's it off. Then the state cops take over, or then the highway takes over. Now, that's my assumption. That's, in talking to them, when I quizzed them on this question, that's basically what he said. That's the assumption that I got from reading through the paperwork.
Question for you then is, turn on how we just had several years ago on your motorcycles, okay?
That's a big one, yeah.
And turn out you had your decimals, or per se, it was by the muffler, okay? And the muffler had to turn on and say, it only could be so loud because it wasn't hauled out or anything else.
And that was the issue with Bentley's, or with a certain facility, let's put it that way, that basically their patrons, when leaving or entering onto a state highway, and therefore that noise generator was something that the state or law enforcement, I guess law enforcement, was responsible for. And that the town's purview in that was limited.
But it wasn't being created at a particular spot? Because it's not more, it was more than individual unit?
But if you remember in that situation, the question was when they do a rally and when they do a ride. And you have 300 motorcycles, you have a duration period that in some cases could exceed the 15-minute duration. In any case, exceeded the number even with a 10 to extra decibels. But the fact was, it was on a road. Now, this is all speculation. I would like to get more information on that particular issue, but I'm just trying to explain what the difference between Ambrose and Essentec was. I don't think Essentec was taking that into consideration. They were asking a ton of questions about all sorts of different noises that are associated with it, including revving an engine and then, you know, pulling the load.
And even dumping gravel. I mean, Bill Stilfen, at the end of the discussion, talked about dumping gravel and loading his truck with gravel. And somebody asked him the question about the lift gate, whether or not it smacks down. And he said he gets on his guys if they let that happen, which was, you know, really not an answer to the question. Because even that activity should be measured in the overall noise that takes place on the lot.
It's under construction.
Quite frankly, in that situation, the problem is, that's where frequently not coming to play. Because it's infrequent that he brings gravel. It's not a frequent activity he does in that situation. So, you know.
But you would think that all of these activities are part and parcel to the noise that occurs on that particular lot, don't you think?
No, because if you look at the problem just about everywhere. If you look at 511-5, those are exempted.
Okay.
Specifically, sounds emanating from construction and maintenance activities between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM are exempted. So the fact that that bangs on the back of it to empty out the rest of the load, I would say that is a construction activity and would be exempted.
Unless it happens frequently.
I'm not sure.
Or on a regular basis.
I'm not sure that would.
Well, it's gotta be continuous too.
But I would also say, I think that's referring more to actual construction occurring on the site. It could be, yeah. As necessary, just because he's doing construction doesn't absolve him from making noise that exceeds the limits. But you could make the argument that that construction activity's not taking place on his property.
Okay, you could also turn on and go at the same idea. There's a copper there banging nails.
And that's what construction is.
But I'm just saying.
Right, but that isn't construction.
But that's.
Yes, it is.
That's, I would wonder if it is. It's material storage.
Okay, I'm just, you know.
But again.
Which would be part of the operation of that facility.
What did you get for the definition of regular? I heard you tell us what continuous was.
I have it right there. Oh, I have frequent. Let me give you regular.
What resource are you using?
I am using Webster's. Regular, arranged in or constituting a definite pattern, especially with the same space between individual instances. Methodical, systematic, orderly, efficient. A regular procedure. Done or happening frequently. Regular border clashes is one that they give you. But as a synonym, they give you frequent, so.
Circumstantial.
Yeah, talk about semantics, you know, semantics.
How about seasonal?
They also give you continu- They also give you continual and repeated, so we're we're all sunk, along with recurrent, periodic, and constant, as well as perpetual.
And that's where I ultimately, I think we're getting ourselves wrapped around an axle on these three words and should focus more on what the conditions are and the exempted activities are that get out of that would allow Tad and the code enforcement officer to approach these in a sensible manner. Like, he he mentioned lawn mowing activities. To me, that falls under the exemption of maintenance, so it it shouldn't even be brought up.
And I and I think that's sensible, you know, you use the word sensible as part of the definition.
Right.
You know, if it's happening at nine forty-five every night, it's not so sensible. But if it's happening at three o'clock on a Sunday afternoon, those are activities that are be to be expected, for instance, I would think.
I mean, and ultimately, if somebody's out there occasionally cutting up firewood or or running a splitter, you know, is there is there language we can put in that exemption for, you know, common household activities that that give staff the ability to say, no, this is not regulated? You know, you're you're, you know, I understand you, you know, person A has a gripe with their neighbor, person B, and you don't like them, and you want to do everything you can to annoy them, but this is not the way to do it.
You say household, do businesses have household activities too?
Well, I don't know, are there blue laws about businesses conducting business like on a Sunday?
Not anymore.
Well, but car dealerships aren't permitted to be open on Sundays, isn't that a blue law?
And it's their most, it's their best sales day.
But they're not open.
But they're not open, that's why.
Okay, so, you know.
Well, I would I would think you could probably put something under five eleven five, just put down four residential households.
Like Tom mentioned, property, property management or property maintenance, you know, common property.
Yeah, I think it would have to, it couldn't, you couldn't just limit it to one type of land, so you'd have.
Well, no, so.
Yeah, so what are what are some of these other examples, Tom?
Well.
Historically that you've encountered.
Well, it's interesting, because usually when we ask them to submit a written complaint, they won't get it, but we get a lot of calls.
Well.
And the fact is.
But here's the problem. You always will get a lot of calls, though.
What the fact is, that's usually when nobody else is around. Are you turning on, say, Monday to Friday, Saturday and Sunday if nobody's around, you turn on to verify?
Well, there in that that you're you're talking about the third rail of enforcement, that is, there's nobody here during the weekend. And usually enforcement of the type we're talking about requires.
Offside.
Having having cops or somebody who's around all the time. As we go forward, as a plan anymore, we're gonna run into this more and more, and we already have two applications before us which could have noise implications. And and yes, do we have an enforcement problem? Do we have an enforcement problem just in going in and with new applications, with new new businesses, whether or not they meet some of these standards? If if regular has such a loose connotation. I like continuous, that's easy, that's easy for us to deal with. Frequent is a little squishy watch scale.
I think they're deliberately vague.
Neither one of those are construed without that continuous.
I mean, what's continuous? Is it, I mean, how long does it have to be to be continuous? A minute?
Unreasonably.
Ten minutes?
Unreasonably.
An hour?
And then we're back to what's reasonable and unreasonable.
Right.
Yeah.
Really what we're talking about here, and that's what's missing, both in state ordinance and in ours, strangely enough, Ambrose brought it up with me when I was talking, you know, arguing with him about several points. He says it's really, one problem with these ordinances is it doesn't take sensitivity of the hearer into effect, that in certain contexts, subjects who are receiving are, these audible noises are gonna be much more sensitive than in other conditions.
But that's too bad, it's it's it has to go by what.
A strict standard.
Well, a reasonable man's standard.
Right.
That's what they call it on a law.
Right.
Well, and there is a definition for nuisance. I mean, the town attorney, when I asked her, what's the definition of nuisance? There was a legal definition of the word nuisance. And I wonder, is there a legal definition of the word egregious? I mean, you know, is that so subjective even so to add a qualifier like that, an adjective? You know, but again, we're back to subjective, you know, what's reasonable, what's sensible?
It's the orders is not intended to 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 protect eggshell, you know, skin separately.
I totally agree.
And that's why we have D E Bs. And the question is, how long, how often, really? How long, how often?
But once you define that, your definition, how?
Yeah, well, that's that's true, you're gonna set, you're gonna draw a line somewhere in the sand.
That's why it has to be.
It may be.
Every.
Well, it already isn't, I think, if you think about a fifteen minute duration for exceeding a sixty D E B is very, is very much of a line in the sand.
That's tough.
And that's one of the problems.
We can't deal on this.
There are certain, certain, you know, a lot of conversation is sixty D E B.
Within reason.
Well, I move that we leave the language as it is.
I think we should at least put a comma in there between continuous and regular, break that up. Right now, it's a continuous, regular sound, which is optimal, to say the least.
So it'll be.
But it should at least be broken up.
Okay, so I have another question for you. Does that make it and or?
It should say or, continuous or regular or frequent.
I think we, if we're gonna put the.
We're playing.
If we're gonna put a comma there, I think we should also eliminate any other ambiguity associated whether whether the frequent source of sound is continuous or not. So it should be continuous, regular, or continuous, frequent.
With with how about com- continuous comma, regular comma, or frequent? So any one of those.
But then we're back at the same place. We're back at the same.
Well, right now, regular or frequent.
Continuous ought to modify both words, I think.
But it's an and or or situation, it'd be one of the three.
Regular applying to both.
Then that's the same problem again. And frequent is, I mean, regular is just too too nebulous.
I don't think so, I think we need it.
I I find it, I think it's a slippery slope. I mean, I can find at fifteen minutes, at fifteen minutes, any kind of regular activity, I can just about outline it with that term regular. Because all you have is a fifteen minute window, and that's only ten decibel exceeding the 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 noise limit, regardless of what district, right?
Fifteen minutes.
What I, if I may, Mr. Schiffer, maybe we should sit on still on this a little bit? I'd like you guys to read some of this stuff and and really look it over before we make a decision as we plan our recommendation.
Yeah, and and I don't have a front of me yet, I'm just, I wanted to bring this one up and get it started. Because when Leah sat here and said regular, and she defined it as leaving your house every day, because I asked her the question, she said, yes, that's regular.
And.
And under that criteria, we can cite people for driving out of their house on a regular basis.
Right, but then we're back to maybe and we're talking about reasonable.
If they're still on every morning at the same time, that's a nuisance.
I think by being deliberately vague, it leaves the question open for to be decided.
Has to be over a certain decimal and over fifteen minutes at that level to to be effective.
Have you ever heard some of these three fifties or four fifties that people drive around?
I have neighbors that have that, and I, they're leaf blowers and all that, you know, it goes on and on and on, but but sometimes you have to be good neighbors and.
I agree.
They'll they'll be done sooner or later.
But the way this is written, doesn't account for that, it really doesn't.
But.
And maybe qualifiers like like what what Jens is talking about is what we have to consider. Because.
You can be so many qualifiers, though.
This is a cudgel you can bring against anybody for anything, the way it is right now. And and the code enforcement officer was horrified, and 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 we sat down and went over this quite a bit. We didn't get into that with you, that happened before you got there.
That's good.
Yeah, because I were going on for another, for hours.
But.
We were getting near this witness issues.
So where are we with this? We're gonna take it under advisement and sit on it?
Miss out.
Okay, tell me this.
May I speak as a concerned citizen as I listen to this discussion? And I understand what you're saying, Tad, but I think it's a slippery slope if you take it out, because we are highly residential in nature, especially in our four districts like ours. If you take it out, it could allow all kinds of activity that is a public nuisance, and there's no regulation around it. So I would urge you to leave the line regular in there. I support a comma, whether it's continuous, comma, regular, or frequent, but I would be highly concerned to have regular taken out, because those three words have very different definitions, and while they have some overlap, I think you're gonna open up to more issues if you remove regular with disturbances. I do support home household maintenance. I don't know how many people actually complain that mounds are being mowed, because we all mow our lawns and chop wood, those are sort of acceptable residential noises. But the train has been here for I don't know how long, and and I have no issue with the train, because that was there before we moved in. But it's about when we're introducing new sound activity that could impact surrounding properties, that I get very concerned if regular is taken out, because it is different than continuous and it's different than frequent. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
And I I would just will say one thing to you, and you're very, I I understand your position, and and I now understand why your focus would be on residential. But if I apply this in the business area, I'm putting people out of business in a business zone.
So should it be different in a business district than a mixed use has is is heavily residential?
It can be heavily business too, that's the problem.
Have a different requirement in the business district, so those, that's where acceptable noise levels are gonna be different than a property that's nestled in amongst residential neighborhoods.
So what what businesses, Tad?
Mixed. Log yards.
Yeah, I would tell you, there's some businesses that are next to each other and just in in route one that will that will be in in conflict with each other. Biggest one's log yards, number one. Some.
Trucking.
Some trucking, definitely trucking. Who else? Oh, even automotive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Automotive repair, you'll get that. You look at Enterprise Drive and see how close those all those properties or all those businesses are to the property line.
Well, maybe we should define the different areas. So because the business area is very different than a a district that's mixed use. For instance, I have somebody behind me that builds cabinets a lot, and he's been cited multiple times. I really am not going to complain, because largely he stopped doing it all day Sunday on a continuous, reg- regular and frequent basis, but.
He does it continuous.
He does, continuous, regular, and frequent, they're all get rolled up into one. But so maybe we should, maybe our definitions rather than eliminate mitigating these three is to, you know, define what goes on in different districts.
It might, it might, that might be an answer, and the problem we're gonna still run into, and Lynn brings it up, and and you bring it up, and this is the conflict we're gonna have in a mixed use district.
Yeah.
I've been worrying about this, and warned with the complaint committee about this, and we're gonna be discussing that more, obviously, on next Thursday when we when we deal with home occupations. You know, the good neighbor policy sounds terrific, it's it's fuzzy, it's one.
Until you don't have.
They are in conflict, often there are very conflicting expectations of both parties. And I think we saw that recently, very distinct conflicts.
Rather than open it up for the potential businesses residentially, I think it's reasonable to allow higher level in the business zone, because that's what it's there for.
That's right.
I agree.
And that's how the current ordinance allows.
Yeah, it does, it has a higher level. The the problem is, the problem isn't really, we can we can make it higher, we can come up with exemptions in the business district, which I think we're gonna need if we keep regular, but it's the mixed use is where the conflict is going to be, it's always where the conflict is.
Right.
You know, we have that edge between residential and business, and especially businesses that starts off slow or or, you know, a home occupation, a perfect example, and then grows, because all businesses, the the intent of business is to grow, is to succeed, is to expand.
The intent of the home occupation is is to allow a seed location, so then they get to a certain point, then be able to afford the business zone.
That's the theory. In practice, that's not what happens.
But we're but we're just letting them grow to whatever, because they've always been there, maybe we have to rethink that.
That's right there, I mean, we've used that term several times tonight, we've used the term 'cause they've been there. Do they have a right to be there because they were there first? Yes. Do they have a right to cause impact beyond their borders? No.
So in Exeter and in Brentwood in New Hampshire, the way they dealt with that, because they're very strict pretty much about rural, residential, and R one. And R one in those two districts means single family housing, which you and I have discussed. But they, certain businesses that no longer fit in the geographical location where they started, they're grandfathered, but if the property is sold, the ability to conduct that business on that property, and I know Marty's gonna have a problem with this, it doesn't, it doesn't go with the land. In other words, the permit to operate that business, that grandfather clause, you know, that the original operator had, doesn't transfer to the new owner. And so there isn't a presumption, for instance, that you get to operate that business in that location on that piece of property, because it no longer fits with the neighborhood.
It's nonconforming.
It's nonconforming, thank you, Dr. So, you know, maybe that's a consideration, because it's it's being adopted, it's in Exeter, it's in Brentwood, it's in Kingston.
The problem we have right now is that nonconforming will transfer to the new owners.
Well, that's why I'm raising the.
And one of the problems might be, and I say might be, but main law and main jurisprudence has always recognized the nonconforming use, if it's conforming with the ordinance, it stays within the balance, it has been set for it, can be transferred.
So there.
It's right continued, so that that person who's built a business doesn't lose an investment. It's almost, if you do that, at least in main law, the way it's it's practiced, there's a presumption of confiscation confiscation when you do that.
Mean like, well, all I'm saying is, as the demographics of an area, these communities in New Hampshire are recognizing the fact that the demographics are changing. And so, and there's more property value in the changes that are occurring in the demographics than they were in the original use of the property. And so they're doing everything they can to encourage that kind of development, because it has other benefits, you know, tax revenue and other things. And so they have come up with this matter in which property, you know, businesses that are grandfathered don't necessarily, a grandfathered business doesn't transfer to a new owner. That doesn't mean they can't operate the business someplace else nearby, it doesn't, it doesn't end the business's ability to be viable, it just means that they can't operate in that particular location.
First of all, if you have, you don't have any sales type, so.
Well, the only that.
But they have very high property, you know, everybody's got a, you know, rights.
If that business is is dependent on that location, and you're depriving that person to gain profit from his location, you have that.
But like Bill Stillson started as a home occupation, and then he grew into a contractor one yard.
Which is permitted in the district.
And then he grew into a contractor two yard.
Right, but it but it's permitted in the R four district.
So with conditions.
With conditions.
So it's not completely wide open. That's how we concluded what we did, because some of the conditions weren't.
But we're not putting him on a business.
No, but he might say that you're limiting his ability to earn a living, and consequently, you know, our decision is punitive. I mean, who knows, you know, what he would say.
But and I've but I've argued that with any kind of zoning, innately does that. Any kind of zoning ordinance innately does that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I may have the best idea to to have a huge factory, and it's gonna, it would make me tons of money, and I would be able to just be do great things, but I can't put it on my R two lot in Arundel.
Even if you start small and grow into that, you have the limits.
That's just, that's that's the inherent.
That's what you were saying, comma, it's supposed to be a seed.
Right.
Right.
I mean, that's what that's what the zoning and every and and the conditional use language does, is it limits what you can do.
We have to look out for protecting all the the neighbors, all the property owners.
We have to look out for protecting all the neighbors, all the property owners, not just that one that's looking growth unlimited. Because it will impact the property values and enjoyment of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I got a question. The whole purpose, the whole purpose of the Euclid decision, was the Supreme Court decision on zoning, basically was based on the municipal need, the municipal police power could be used in order to protect and stabilize property values. Not just residential, but business property values. Make sure that all property values stay stable, not only for the benefit of the owners of that property, but also for the municipality that depends on that revenue stream in order to survive. So that was the basis for that decision. And that was, so that would apply also to business. And conversely, we would say, you know, our policy of letting, letting residential in a business zone is probably ill-advised for the same reasons.
All right, here, here's a question to ask you along that lines. You have somebody, who's that like me, okay? He retired, okay? And you wanna put up a garage, okay? Garage bigger than normal, to put your toys in. And it's in a residential. You tell me you can't do it? You can't?
I don't think that's the garage that's the issue.
That's what I'm saying is.
It's doing business.
No, not business.
No, if it's, if it's a garage, no. You can put your toys, you know, you can have a huge garage. You could have a garage the size of.
Mine?
Well, I was gonna say the barn up on Tradius property, where he's doing, doing some work. He's got a huge barn up there, he stores his toys in it.
But like the Arundel cottages was here, and we were questioning about them about the height of their shed. I mean, you know, there, there are limits. And as neighborhoods and demographics change, and you want your neighborhoods to grow and prosper, you have to look at what the, and I'm not saying what that direction is because I don't really know. But for instance, if you want business areas to be strictly business, what we discussed last time, is there are a lot of mixed-use properties with restaurants, retail, and housing all clustered together. And those are the ones that are really working out and are prospering and flourishing, for instance, in other areas. So they're really mixed use. I think what they're building near the Rockingham Mall in New Hampshire off of 93. It's car dealerships, it's residential, it's townhouses, it's retail, it's restaurants, it's everything together.
One thing they have, but they have infrastructure. We don't have it.
No, no. All I'm saying, Marty, is, so you were saying business areas, maybe we shouldn't allow residential and business areas. I, we have to have enough foresight to see how people, how people wanna live, where they wanna live, and what's gonna benefit the community the most in terms of our zoning and the kinds of things that we build. So.
You're talking Jane Jacobs stuff here. I mean, it's very basic, you know, life in the city stuff, of having, being able to integrate various uses together. And it works well in, more in an urban environment than it does in a suburban and resident, in a rural environment.
Because, because there is a more, an acclimation to noise and other, and crowding conditions or anything else. People are used to that.
Right.
But our new tax law that was just signed into effect in the beginning of 2018, that the Senate, the Congress passed, okay, has a condition in it, in fact, I think the Trumps are taking advantage of it with other real estate developers. And that is extra brownie points for retail, residential, and business development in underdeveloped areas, for instance. And there are several areas in Maine, I was surprised not to see Arundel on the list, where developers are getting incentives to come and build things that are exactly what I just described. Mixed use, shopping, residential, and whatever.
Because the last time I looked, there was a very small section employed on the qualified.
Well, I don't know, but it was in the New York Times today. They list, it's all over the country. I mean, there are all these different areas that they identify.
I'm simply saying that in the state of Maine, it was a very small section.
From our standpoint, if we wanted, you know, we actually have, if you read the DV1 district, when we did the DV1 district, we looked at vertical stratification. Where we said you can put business on the first floor. You have to, but you can put residential on the second, third, and fourth floors, looking at the organization. We, right now, if we wanted to, we, we could encourage such things if we wanted to do a TIFT district.
All I'm saying is.
We could get incentives through using the TIFT district mechanism in order to encourage that by providing tax benefits or tax incentives.
And that's a huge tax base for the town. And I'm not saying we should do it or not do it. All I'm saying is, is we should start thinking, and not to say that we aren't, but looking at the big picture and the trends of where things are going.
I don't disagree. I, I, I hate to be the one that's saying this. But in a sense, at the same time, we have to think of our voting public we've got to deal with in some of these things. That's why we moderate some of our more ambitious ideas, because we have to get them through town.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I just.
This discussion leads us into the second point on here.
Okay.
A review of the organization of the districts by principal uses. Complan, Complan wants us to do it differently.
Yes, they do want us to do it differently. And we have to, we have to deal with this.
And we have to take that into consideration.
And the R1 is our first, is, I didn't think the R1 would be our, basically our test tube, but it's gonna be our test tube. What we do in the R1 is gonna affect all the other districts.
Which is why everybody has to be there next Thursday.
Because we're dealing with home, home occupations, which is, is a given. It's considered to be almost a right in, in most rural communities, and it is, it's part of rural life. However, all, most of our, I, many of our problems that we've had in enforcement have been home occupations that have outrun their location in which the, the occupation is actually eclipsed the residential use that was originally there.
How clear is it made to people when they, when they come in and are seeking to establish a home occupation use that there may be a sunset to their ability to take advantage of that?
There isn't. None. That, that is not a cult, that is neither a regulatory nor a cultural phenomenon in this town. We don't do it.
Well, we don't, we don't do it for a couple of reasons. From having talked to the code enforcement officer, I'd venture to say 90% of the people that have home occupations never went into town hall.
That's right.
They don't know.
We don't know they exist until they become a problem.
But if you look at those definitions that I sent around early on, it's about how many employees, how many parking spaces, regular, frequent, consistent visitors, and, you know, so on and so forth. So they define those things, but, you know, you and I talked about sitting in your pajamas, doing your, you know, writing a brief or, you know, doing a spreadsheet on, you know, tax, you know, implications for your client. That doesn't necessarily need a visit to the town hall. But maybe a hair salon or something else, you know, does for various reasons. And they, the other towns define that.
Yep.
But they don't get into the weeds of sitting in your pajamas, writing a brief, and doing a spreadsheet on purpose. So.
And that's something we're gonna have to struggle with on, on next Thursday because I think we do have to define. The code enforcement officer wants it defined.
Yeah, he does.
He wants it defined because he, he's got the, in the, in the, in the enviable liking I speak tonight, an enviable task of having to enforce this stuff. And often, it's without all the information he needs, without the ability to walk onto somebody's property, and has to get testimony from people in order to even have probable cause, if you will, to pursue it. Not to mention also having to have the support, you know, the fiscal capability to be able to pursue this.
What was it that the, the Complan called for in terms of districts? I know they wanted residential, they wanted mixed.
Originally, they talked, they really, if you look at the Complan, they called all districts mixed use.
Well, we had a big discussion, even me and we had with Tom, when Tom Dallin was there. Because we talked about townhouses and all kinds of things. And I forget the name of the gal who was there talking about somebody making soap, but she was a.
Is it Donna or Diana?
I don't remember, but, um, you know, and I was talking to you about people have, have the presumption that an R1 district is single-family housing. And you were talking about nursing homes and hospice care and all kinds of other things. And so I think we, we need to get that sorted out. R1 most of all.
When we, when we, when we R1, I, I don't, I don't see how you're going to, I mean, I think the thing that we recognized in that situation is if conflicting goals that are very difficult to resolve, and that is preserving rural character and densely urbanized residential development. How do you do that?
They're oxymorons.
Well, you can in a way do it, but it's a design problem more than anything else. It's how you order these uses is the question of stratification. It's the question of hiding things or integrating things so they aren't obtrusive to each other. It's, 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 it's much more complex than cookie cutter, space and bulk.
Yeah, for sure.
Totally. It, it really, it has to be a very thoughtful process.
Particularly in, in an evolving rural town.
Yes. And if we don't address this at this point, we're gonna go the same way as every other rural town that's been overwhelmed by, you know, the steamroller of development, could imagine. We won't get a lot of residential, cookie cutter, and will continue to have conflict as they infringe upon areas that have traditionally been used for natural resource uses. And those areas where they want to produce new natural resource or business uses. And, and we're just gonna have just conflict and we're gonna lose control of the community unless we tackle it now. Because what we've got right now, our zoning right now is no different than it is in New Hampshire or Connecticut or some of these towns that have been overrun already.
Yeah, and New Hampshire's trying to get a handle on it, seriously. A lot of it is anyway.
I have just a thought, but I don't know if this is even, we have certain sections of 55 and older. Is there any restrictions on home occupation there and growth? Just, just, I'm just throwing it out?
No.
I mean, it's.
No, there isn't. Right now, there is.
I'm just throwing it out as a.
There isn't on our level, is there on the Fed?
No.
Okay.
Why would there be? We, we hear the restriction is in the homeowner covenants, that's what you mean.
I was gonna say, what are the needs for that particular neighborhood?
I mean, it's just a thought, that's all I'm trying to.
And in all the ordinances, it's when the business overruns the residence. In other words, the primary function of the property is no longer being a residence, that it's all of a sudden turned into a business, where the lion's share of the use of the property becomes business as opposed to residence.
Okay. If that's, if that's, if that's the case, okay, you have a three, four-bedroom house, okay? Kids grow up. Mom and dad still live there. Now, okay, what do you do with the other two bedrooms? During, you can expand your business into those bedrooms.
Well, I'm just telling you, they do that on purpose, Marty, because if it's, if it's a business and a residence and the residence ceases to function as a residence, but really is starting to function as a business, then it's no longer, it's sort of what Tom was saying, it's no longer a home occupation.
Under the current ordinance, you can only use 25% of the square footage of the property for your business, of, of the house, for your business. So if you have a 1,600 square foot house, well, I've, I've got an 1,800 square foot, I could use 450 square feet.
Okay, I guess. To me, that's the wrong, that's the wrong, I know. But, but to me, whether I use three, I could use three quarters of my house as a business. And if it's a, a non-intrusive business, the town, nobody should care.
Define a non-intrusive business.
I don't know, maybe I have, maybe I have, I store different things. And I bring them in and out in a, in a regular truck. I don't know. I mean, I have no idea. But, but I could have, conversely, I could have a very small portion of a house, be dedicated to a business as a home occupation and get regular customers coming in and out, different things. And it's very intrusive to my neighbors.
Absolutely.
So is that the right way to regulate?
That's just one of the factors.
That's just one of the things.
There are many definitions, many permutations of.
That's part of what we're gonna be discussing next Thursday.
But its consistency is interesting across, across the board. All the towns seem to be the same definition.
All right, what else is next? I said nine o'clock, you said.
Well, the other thing is a review of the contract theirs, is consistence inconsistencies in 9314.
Yeah.
What about the inconsistencies?
Well, we got different standards for the existing yards versus the proposed new yards. In fact, the existing yards have a higher standard than new yards. In terms of space, bulk, and setbacks. You have to have a minimum five-acre yard, a lot, in order to have an existing contractor two yard. But you, you don't have a minimum lot size in the, except for the underlying district, lot size.
You wanna make one less or another more restricted?
Well, the point is, let's reconcile the two, is, is the point. Especially since we're going, you, you voted to put on the, whether it be on the special town meeting or on the June town meeting, you voted to basically reinstate the registration of existing yards in order to, to bring in some of the guys from the cold who never registered in the first place.
That takes into the, that one guy who has the landscaping business. It would open the door back up to him.
Or.
Maybe not, because if it's not allowed in the R1, then he still shit out a lot.
Marty, you, we're on tape, please watch the language.
Unless.
I didn't see this.
Actually, it's based, it's based also, it's, it's also based on the fact whether you actually had a legitimate business in the first place. If you exceeded your original, your original permit, or you weren't there illegally, you never got a permit to be there in the first place, or you weren't established well before zoning, then it doesn't give you, it's not a, it's not an amnesty that way. You have to prove, it's for those guys who are legit, who never, who expanded or want to expand. The non-conforming uses, the issue of non-conforming uses, and they wanna expand, become something more. And that's, that's what it's for. But if you, if you, it's like, if you, if you've done this illegally, if you never got permits, and you just did it without anybody knowing about it, they're not qualified. That was the standards you guys were in there.
Ted, I, I can't find, what are you talking about, where new is less restricted than?
Well, the biggest one was space involved in plans.
Space involved, nothing.
Well, we don't have it in the new.
Oh, so could we just take that, that chart, that table?
Yeah, that would be my first, that would be my first suggestion. Take what we did in existing, put it over in, in, in new. So we have that same standard. So in order to have a yard, you gotta have five acres. I mean, that's a good start.
And what zone?
Nine, well, that's, that's the other thing.
And we even need a, a different category for new versus existing, maybe we could.
The only reason we do that is because we're gonna reinstate, we're going to reinstate, provide one more year for people to register. Otherwise, as you recall, I suggest we get rid of that whole registration process out of here.
So that, that would only be left just, just allow that one last chance?
One more chance, one year.
That's, that's assuming that it passes.
That's assuming.
And if it doesn't pass, I think we should just take it out of the ordinance.
We need to get it out, because it.
I'm saying it would pass California, I think it's one of the.
Sadly, the public will.
But do we, do we have, anyway, I know we've passed this before, but do we have any way of knowing who they are that aren't registered yet?
No.
Two D. 90% of them.
We're gonna keep on getting someone next year saying, I just keep going on forever.
So for yard two, it gives us something but for.
It also, you know, it also requires driveway entrances to get away from residential. One thing that does do that, that's disturbing is it talks about parking storages, we, we visually block. The mitigation is only eight feet tall. So that means it's only from around the floor that has to be blocked.
But he's still never registered in town.
It's gonna be page 153, course, where it's also.
Does it have building heights?
Well, you said 153. Oh, it has building heights of, of the other line. 153 is not running for us.
It's, you'll pay, you'll find it under 413, excuse me, 9314, 2D. I have page one fifty-three. It's in your notes.
Here it says contractor yard twos in R one, R two, R three and R four districts.
Right.
So.
But then she yard number one.
That's existing.
Existing.
Oh, that's existing.
Those are existing ones. Those are most of them operate. And in there, add an item. Got perfect, yeah, perfect duty.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Have also, you know, received permits. I mean, remember, there's the playing war back in the, I don't think there's too many, well, Tom might have been on the playing war. Remember giving out, I don't know if it was home occupations or just conditional use permits for contractors to operate.
No, I thought they were considered home occupation.
I think they weren't considered home, contractor was considered being a home occupation. The only reason Mark, Mark Welch had to do his gravel, basically, because he was doing a gravel. And then when he ran out of gravel, it just turned into a contractor yard. Big one. Yeah. But it was considered a home occupation at that time. Because that was the, that was, that was a rule. That was the culture of this world.
Home occupation. Anything that you're doing at, yeah, based at home.
Bill Houston being out on, on, on Long Haven Road in a residential district.
And lived in now. Home occupation.
Yeah, that's what they did.
Right. I mean, that's, but in that, in that's typical.
You, you, you look at the same cases like that. Red Wilberclough, okay? Oman Wilberclough.
Yeah.
Okay? On the Senate road. Didn't even need. Anything. And he still operated a business. And that's right next to Red Apple.
And that's what this stuff is for. That's what this registration was for. It was the, because they're non-conforming uses, they don't have permits. And if they wanted to expand, if they wanted to expand, this gave them the capability to expand, but they hadn't any of these standards.
But it also allowed them to go to the bank, get financing.
That was the other thing.
Yeah, protect them.
For those guys who need, who operate off of financing, a lot of contractors need financing. They need, they need construction loans. If they're non-conforming, they have a problem with the town, they can't do it. They can't get the loan.
A lot of them too, back then, you just waited up until you needed that new trucking, just went out and bought the truck. You didn't bother to turn to go to the banks anymore.
But, I mean, this is, this is looking at today's finance.
Yeah, but back then trucks weren't as expensive as what they are today.
Cars weren't either.
I, I think one of the things we need to look at here is the, the point that Jamie brought up during that last discussion. All parking and storage areas shall be visually blocked. You will not be able to see them. Do we want it to be visually blocked or should we have said buffered or?
Well, yeah, I think it needs to have, a language that's consistent in our landscaping.
And I would say that would be buffering in that situation. When the board makes the determination based on conditions. On what percentage of blockage has occurred. Because if we look at the mitigation measure right after that, it's an eight foot height.
Yep.
Well. That does nothing for anybody who's on the second floor of a property. Or better yet, as we witnessed over in B and B Trucking. Where they're grading it, so the, the, basically, the foundation of the building, the big building that's gonna be right next to you. Is above the stockade fence that's made to buffer you, you know, buffer the building. So that mitigation measure is too specific for the condition. It's, that either, we're gonna say you're only blocking from the first floor of a level, ground floor level. Or else we get much more. Much more radical about it. And think of it this way, if it's, if it's done regardless of what the context is. Then we look, a good example would be Mr. Tronier's application. When you remember that north side of his, where, where we have that.
With the water tower, is that?
No, no, no. Rule one eleven.
Okay, cause somebody came to us and talked to us about they had a, a storage facility or it was, looked like a water tower and they were really concerned about. The trees blocking the top of.
That's a, that's a quality issue.
Yeah, that's the water district.
Water district.
Yeah, this one, this one is, they're out in the middle of nowhere. On, on property in which, um.
Been vacant forever.
Is, is very, is very open. And it doesn't look like it's gonna be developed anytime soon, but that's because of the existing people who live there. But the property line there is very porous. It's, it's been cleared and the actual property line, um, you can see straight on through. Now, does this mean you gotta buffer it when there's nobody to impact, but there might be somebody to impact in the future? And these are, these are things we have to, I mean, that could be a hardship in some cases, or it could be a prudent playing.
And it could be based on circumstances at the time.
It could be. But what happens if somebody puts a house in there?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the thing. If we start and consider what's the objective, if the objective is to protect the person in the back and they don't care. But why are we getting involved in that?
I'll tell you why. Here's, here's a good example. You're gonna run into this, cause we're gonna have it. We have a certain. A, a certain automobile salvage situation where, um. The, a butter didn't care if there was a stockade fence separating him from, uh, the yard. And that a butter has now, no longer owns the property, but there's a newer butter and he cares very much.
Did he buy the property without the, without the, uh, did he see the conditions before he bought it? Cause if he did, then that's his fault for walking in with it.
I agree with that one.
I agree with that too.
That's a good one. However, the playing board is obligated to acquire that.
Yeah, but see, this is waiting and we don't need to go. Government ought to do things in the least, least.
Intrusive.
In a, in a least number of times that it absolutely has to.
I don't argue that, but then that, we, we could say the same thing about a lot of contractor yards that are in the middle of a residential zone that we know is gonna be developed.
In a mixed, in a mixed zone.
Some of these are allowed in residential zones. The contractor yard ones are allowed in, in residential zones, except for R one.
Except for R one.
So. Do we think of the neighbors who are gonna be there eventually? And say, don't cut that buffer, keep a buffer here, keep a fifty foot buffer? I mean, it might be something simply, it might be done by some, a simple standard like you need a fifty foot buffer between your yard and the property line. And you don't move the vegetation. That might be enough.
Right.
And that might be a simple solution to something like this. Where you don't have to put up a fence, you don't have to put up giant walls or prolap or whatever to mitigate. Say, let's stop letting people cut all the, cut, cut the side yards. Cause that's where the problems occur. I mean, we all know this. We've seen it how many times? How many mitigation situations have we run into where they cut the whole lot? We're like, guys, now you have nothing between you and the house next door, the business that's gonna be next door.
Champagne energy.
Doesn't wanna use, doesn't wanna project that image that you're projecting. So.
Champagne energy when they cut all those.
Yeah, that's right.
Southern Marine, Southern Marine too.
That might be a very easy way.
That might be the fastest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what are we doing with this?
Well, we, we just need to, from my perspective, I think we just need to look at the visually blocked and say, should we just change it to buffered?
That would be a nice quick fix. Then buffer would be.
I mean visually blocked, like Jamie brought up, visually blocked. You can't see it. How's that gonna work? From where?
And what time of year?
And you remember with betters, we had that problem with, uh, the, uh, the butter where we had to make a deal. That we would limit the buff, the, the blockage to basically the first floor elevation, because if we, if it was anywhere on the property, it was impossible to.
Yeah.
You could not achieve, it was unachievable standard, which is lawyerable.
And do we define what buffer it is?
Yes, we do.
We do have a definition.
We have a definition of buffer. And it gets the playing board some questions.
I'll make a motion here that we, we amend this to change block to buffer. And also to, to move that ta, copy that table into the new contractor yard.
Right, so they're consistent with each other.
So keep that consistent. I'll second that.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded to change the language from visually blocked.
To visually.
To buffered.
To buffered. Should, should include visually or just?
No. I mean, you just, it should just say buffered. Yep, and I don't even think we need to specify how you do it.
No.
So we take this bad out. Cause that implies that eight foot fence will take care of the problem.
It should just, all parking and storage areas shall be buffered.
Yep. Buffered in a court case. Buffered in a court case with the whatever de, definition or other standard or, or whatever spelled it out.
Agreed. Agreed.
Oh, the other thing that was a.
But we're, just to clarify the motion, would, it would say shall be buffered from the street and abutting properties, period?
Period.
Period.
Period. It's your job to figure out how to do that to meet our standard.
Right.
That should, that shows up in two different ways. That's in yard one as well.
Yard one, it should be amended accordingly too.
Yes.
Question.
Okay.
And then we'll move the table from.
Usually blocked.
We'll move the, the space and bulk standards table from, uh, D one. Over into the, uh, contract yard two. For new.
Right, so the two will be consistent with each other.
Correct.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
On your buffering, how do you, how do you deal with it? As an example. Two property, different property owners do not want any buffering between them.
I know what you're talking about, Marty.
And that's exactly, and that's exactly what we're talking about on that. Auto storage and then auto salvage.
No. I wasn't talking about.
I know, it's the same situation.
Where the situation arises, because then the, the one landowner said, okay, fine, I don't care, I don't want. The buffer, I don't want anything put in there. You don't have to do it and we went along with it. He sold the property as a new owner. The new owner is going, you better come up with something.
This is where, I'm speaking of a different situation.
Okay. It may be a different group of people, but I think the scenario is.
I think what he's getting at is two was property.
No, not two was.
You think the one on round one?
Yes.
Right.
Champagne, uh, not champagne, uh, uh, champagne owner.
Champion, yeah. That's what I was thinking, not, not when Ted was saying.
But at least where.
Right. You've got two properties and we, we mandated a buffer was created between the two.
Even though.
Cause they, one was business and one was residential, I believe.
Yes, yep.
Right.
But it was still in the business section, which, and, and the owner, it was vacant back there. And they did not want anything.
Didn't want a fence or anything.
That wasn't much of a buffer, to be honest.
That was like putting a couple of existence cases.
We, we could adopt what Jens said and I don't have a problem with that, because if you buy a piece of property. And the guy next door to you is doing what he's allowed to do and you don't like it, be quiet, don't complain about it.
Don't buy the property.
If, if you saw it beforehand, don't buy the property. You should, you shouldn't be coming to us and asking us to fix something that you could see when you signed on the dotted line.
But I'll also tell you from this standpoint, if we don't follow the ordinance, if we, if it says now shall, we have to.
We have to.
We have to.
And that's what happened in this case. It says you have to be buffered.
And we ignored that and that's something that. I'm, I'm not sure that we should be adopting that unless we have some sort of escape clause in here. Cause that's an appealable decision. And we'll lose.
It could be just that it, it shall be at the time of approval. And then.
Then, then somebody can go and cut the buffer down.
That's right. At the time of approval.
It has, it has to be maintained though. You, you have to maintain that buffer. You can't just.
No, they cut it before you get the approval.
Well, they cut it right after they get the approval.
Yeah.
They come to us and they say, you gave me, you gave me this approval and I had the buffer. You mean I couldn't cut it after I got approval?
I'm sorry. But we, we have to be clear that this, this has to be kept buffered.
Has to be.
It's not just this week.
Maintain the buffer.
Yeah.
I mean, all diseased and design, and dying all of a sudden. That can happen, but very intriguing.
My take is there could be certain circumstances. Where I would like to see the, the ability to buffer between properties be able to be waived when that. Like the situation that you referred to earlier. When the two parties agree that the buffer isn't necessary. But that there's a very clear condition that if that agreement goes away, maybe it's just because of a souring of a relationship. That the person that's, that's, has the conditional use that has to be renewed. Knows that they have a potential that that buffer needs to be instated.
You brought a very interesting point. I mean, basically, that's a penalty that, that is sort of Damocles right there, number one. But you also made it, made a statement that. Yeah, he did. Renewal of a conditional use.
We don't renew.
We do, we do only certain ones do we renew, but I mean, that's something that we've talked about in the past. Using it as, as our own enforcement mechanism.
As, as your, our own good neighbor policy.
Exactly. You'll come back in for a, a checkup. Every X number of years.
And three years may be too frequent for a lot of applica, a lot of, of uses.
And if it's a very easy process, not, not a burdensome process. I don't, I mean, we view, we use it right now for certain uses. We let them submit the same stuff. We go out and verify that it's still the same. It's not really that burdensome. We probably make it a lot cheaper for them too. Fee stipend. That's one way to, Jamie, that's, that's one of the best ways to do it, is to have a renewable conditional use term. It certainly keeps people.
It keeps people honest. But I think if we're, I, I like that idea, but if we're gonna do that, then they have to understand that if a neighbor, if. Your neighbor sells their property and they don't like the fact that you've got clear cut all the way through, you may have to put trees in there. You may have to do something.
You.
Why not just require them to have a buffer and leave it, leave it at that?
That's the easy way.
But, but, and that, but that's the, that's when you get into the situation where you, you. Put a buffer up that you, and you're not buffering anybody, but the squirrels are the chipmunks.
Right, yeah. No, we don't, why require it?
Yeah.
Or unnecessary. I guess that's big too.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, and we're not gonna capture every scenario.
No, 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 there's gonna be, yeah, there, there's gonna be some flexibility and, you know, frankly speaking, I also think that buffering isn't always the answer. It actually is deleterious in some of the situations.
Not sensible and reasonable, buffering.
Well, you know.
No, I mean, at worst.
You gotta come up and, and look through our files sometimes. On some sensible and reasonable decision making.
No, you know, I'm, I'm fine if we, if, if we say. If, if you come before this board and your neighbor has said that I don't mind that it is not buffered. Then I'm gonna side with Jens and say, let the buyer beware from that.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah. You bought that piece of property knowing full well. That there was no buffer and you could see the neighbor. You gotta live with it. You got no problem.
Like the foghorn thing Marty brought.
Exactly.
You bought a piece of property.
Sure, but not listen to the foghorn.
Well, it's probably got something to do with the first time it went off, you fell out of bed, broken arm.
No, I'm just saying.
Scared you half to death.
We're talking about contractor yard. We're talking about every use.
I think it does have.
Talking about a contractor yard.
It should just have a buffer.
We're just talking about contractor yard here, which are messy, not very pretty to look at and up there with junkyards. Just, let's make it easy on ourselves.
Okay. Yeah, I think contractor yard should definitely be buffered.
Do we, do we take a vote on that motion?
No, we'd no.
No, we have not.
We've had plenty of discussion.
So, so the motion. Let, let me.
Rearticulate.
Rearticulate the motion, as I can remember.
Motion, so.
The motion is to change the sections for contractor yard one and car, yard two. To say all parking and storage areas shall be visual, shall be buffered from above the street and abutting properties.
Area.
Visually buffered.
No, just buffered, because buffering is, is a visual description in the ordinance.
That will be new and existing. And then we'll, we'll, uh, copy the table for the space and bulk.
That's right.
That's it.
Into the contractor two. So, any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
No.
No, I'm sorry, it's. Two, three, four, six to one.
Is Marty one?
Or did he abstain?
Or, yeah, are you abstaining or he's, yes, no, or?
He voted no.
He's saying no. Okay, six to one. You think it should visually block? Uh, we know one more. Uh, we know one more, so we're good.
Open.
I think that's not what it says, right now it says blocked.
Says visually blocked, that's, that's so restrictive.
And that's what we're changing.
So restrictive, Marty, you're not understanding this, you're, we think you should be voting with us.
We're making it easier.
We know, we know your, we know how you're wiring, Marty, you're, you're dripping, come on, man.
Okay, so you're saying.
Instead of it being visually blocked, which means you can't see it at all, we're saying it should be buffered, and I, based on our definition of buffering, it could be what? It has to be up to.
Seventy-five to hundred.
Seventy-five to a hundred.
Between seventy-five and a hundred percent.
But I don't think it's a hundred.
Bruce, Bruce, you need to go ahead.
I don't think you could ever do a hundred, yeah.
Okay, then I'll go on.
Yeah, this lets, this is.
Hit that anyways.
No, this is letting the standard off.
Oh, yeah. It's giving a little more, it's giving us more flexibility and not being.
We needed that one vote.
Went down to the wire.
You guys really set a super majority on that one.
It's unanimous.
So, we're good with your. We're gonna get one more, we got one more?
What?
Oh, we got other business.
No.
Yes, other business.
What's the other one that, cause it's not on.
It is on there.
Which one?
It's all over it.
What did I pull over, I only seen these things on there.
Yeah, did we go over review of organization of districts?
Oh.
Oh, we started.
Oh, God, we're never gonna be out of here by now.
No, 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 we are, this is simple than it sounds like.
Oh, geez.
Famous words of Martin's.
Do we have, do we staff notes on that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a one pager. I even hit it.
Oh, what was that?
It was a one pager.
Oh, here.
Here it is.
Yeah.
Yes. Great.
It was basically saying, instead of having the big huge cauldron of all the way in uses, shall we take another stab at it and identify what's a business district, what's a residential district, and what's a mixed use district? Because there are other sections of the ordinance that make that distinction of it being in a residential district, in a business district, or in a mixed use district. Everything from lighting to buffering to noise, it's just, the whole ordinance was built around those three districts, those three categories of districts. And because of the situation, getting this thing passed, we agreed that we would put them all in a cauldron. And it's very confusing to applicants and to real estate brokers and appraisers. They say, well, what's a business, I gotta go, what's my business districts in here, they gotta go through all this, all the districts and try to figure out what's a business district, what's a residential district?
Gateway. Gateway district.
It's business, that's a mixed use district.
So there, so for instance, the map that York provides in its ordinances that basically divides the whole town of York, you can see where all the districts are, is that what people are looking for, a definitive way to identify where each, each district is, don't we have a map that does that?
It's not the map, it's the, it's the organization just in this, in this ordinance. Because we don't, we used to identify things as business districts, residential districts, and mixed use districts. And we don't do that, and there are sections of the ordinance that reference our identification of things as business districts. And as residential, I mean, you know, even our screening talks about, you're supposed to screen this in business districts, but it's not identified as a business district, because we don't have the classifications of business districts, and people get confused.
So you're, we should look.
Be an easy fix, okay?
Well, we have to sell it to a certain group of people.
Could you put together?
By next Thursday?
Just an outline?
Yeah, next Thursday. Yeah, cause we've got, we've got a number of areas that, that are definitely mixed use.
Yeah.
Like Gateway, Townhouse Corner, yeah, we could make the argument for the ARD district.
No, ARDs, it says AR, it says the Alfred Grove Business District.
Oh, so it's the ARBs.
That's what it's called.
Okay, then, yeah, but there, there aren't that many, uh, mixed use districts. And from a business point of view, we have some very clearly defined business districts. The question becomes, do we, you know, do we add any of the residential districts into the mixed use? Like, our, our four is a mixed use according to the company.
It's not a residential district, it's rural conservation. That's where all our natural resource stuff goes.
Why would we make it more mixed use?
Well, we're just identifying, so some people aren't surprised.
Identifying to keep the, right.
I mean, I've, we've got, I've, I've got appraisers coming in saying, this is a residential district, and we said, no, it's a rural conservation, it's a mixed use district, and they get confused.
So as lo-, as long as we identify it as a mixed use.
And, and we should, because also there, we have different standards.
So.
Landscaping standards that are stricter in residential districts, much less strict in, in, in business districts, we say that you have to provide buffering if you're a, a, but a residential district.
Yep.
And we should categorize them, so we don't have to argue about whether something's a residential district.
Do we describe it as, do we describe it typically in the ordinance as in, you know, using the, the abbreviation RC or R four?
Uh, R, it's right now R four, you might, I couldn't call it RC because we,
Right. Why not?
Because the deal was, we didn't change a single thing when we went to the form back there.
Like, when we first did it, yeah.
Remember that?
I do remember that.
Yeah.
I mean, so, I, I mean, the vernacular, I think is important there. Because I would agree, I mean, and we've, we've sort of hashed this out during the faith tech thing, that, you know, that district, the rural conservation district is mixed use.
Right.
And I think getting away from calling it the R four, which is the hierarchy of residential R one, residential R two, then the logical progression to R four gives people that impression.
Exactly, and that's why it was called the RC district in the complaint.
Right. Right.
To get away from that. But it's not just that, I mean, you know, people make the assumption that the, the Gateway District is a business district, it's a mixed use district. Townhouse Corner is a mixed use district.
Yeah.
It's primarily business, yeah, but residences are permitted.
And I think it's important we use the same definitions and terms.
Right, consistently.
Consistently, regularly, and frequently, so.
So we're, so we're looking at the VI, the DB one.
Continuously frequent.
ARD, the business.
Right, you know, we had that discussion when we were sitting there with Tom, and that is, the language, the terminology should be the same throughout the document.
Exactly, and that's the problem, it's not right now.
Right.
Because we had to do that for political reasons.
Okay, so let's work on correcting it.
You have to redline that.
And we have a comment.
Yes, and I apologize, I don't have my reading glasses, so I can't see the comprehensive plan, but I spent a lot of time throughout this entire process reading it. And I believe the comprehensive plan was very clear that our, rural conservation was separate, this was, I presented this and argued this to you, was separate from mixed use, so you gotta look, go back and look at the comprehensive plan.
In, in all honesty, that would not surprise me considering some of the other conflicts that are showing up in, in the plan.
Yeah, so I guess it's not an easy fix, the way I look at it, cause the comp plan has been approved by the town back in, what, two thousand and seven, and it.
No, that's the wrong one.
Yeah, two thousand and sixteen.
Whenever, whenever it was approved, that, that it, it broke it into four districts, and mixed use was clearly separate from rural conservation. And the mixed use was clearly defined by location, Townhouse Corner being one of them, there was specific addresses in the comp plan that identified the mixed use districts, and rural conservation was separate and not, and not on that, that list.
It might be it's all category.
What's that?
It's tricky, it's all category.
They were all, they were all considered being this, mixed use districts.
Yeah, because according to the comp plan, comp, business districts, gravel pits, contractor storage yards, log yards are allowed in the residential R four district, which is.
Rural conservation.
Rural conservation.
Then maybe the comp plan has some contradictions, sometimes, you know.
There's no question they have contradictions.
The whole thing is to be looked at and.
And normalized.
Yes, consistent, cause it's not.
Yeah, there's, there's no question there is some contradictions within that plan, and that's one of the things that we need to look at here, how are we gonna address this and how are we gonna fix it?
And since the ordinance is required to be congruent with the, the comprehensive plan, then I think you start there.
It's actually not required.
I believe the ordinance says it has to be inconsistent with comprehensive plan.
We have to take it into consideration when we do stuff, but it doesn't have to follow to, to the teeth, that information.
What are you, uh, when you find it, send everybody a, send Ted a copy?
Send it to him.
Um, highlighted, so we.
So we can get it to Doc.
So we can give it to Ted.
So we can give it to Doc.
So we can have it at his fingertips.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion, definitely.
And the differentiation between a mixed use and a rural conservation.
Uh, I don't know, it'll be interesting.
Yeah. I like that distinction.
Is there a plan, this report of any kind?
Uh, yeah, I've got, um, we've got a number of different applications coming in for next. The January meeting's gonna be pre-packed up, as you know, we got two public carings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've got a, uh, I've, I've got an expansion of a, of a daycare center doubling in size from a twenty to forty children, they're gonna be coming to you.
Which zone?
Which one?
R one. Uh, no, no, it's in, it's on the edge of R one, it's in the DB, DB one district.
Okay.
It's in existing use and they're expanding, and it's really just a traffic issue. It's gonna be septic, fire separation, traffic issue, already met with it several times, not sure whether you guys are gonna wanna take this on, you might be getting over staff. Um, it's gonna be circulation, Jamie might have fun with this, uh, it's also peak hour. I mean, we're looking at, in a two hour period, we're gonna have forty trips easily. Just from one business in here, so, it may not seem a lot, but.
Eighty trips.
Forty trips for, for the, forty kids, so we're assuming one, one car per, per kid. Plus the extra for the employees.
But they're in and out.
In and out, eighty trips.
Yeah, eighty trips, well, good point, eighty trips within that time, within that peak hour, or, it's actually peak hour and a half.
Yeah.
It's really peak hour and a half, so we're talking about eighty trips there and, and circulation's kind of, needs work, so, I don't know. I'm, I'm having that, the owner put up an application, I'm gonna put it before you on the tenth. You guys make a decision whether you wanna do it yourselves or have staff do it.
What date is our next, is our meeting?
Is it the tenth, January tenth?
Tenth.
January tenth. The, we're meeting with the comp plan next Thursday.
Yep, comp plan is seven o'clock here next Thursday, uh, and the topic's still gonna be what's in the R one district. We're gonna focus on home occupations, the issue of stratification of home occupations. Goad Officer has spent some time with, with the chairman and me about what he'd like to see. Um, I'll be, hopefully get a letter, I'll force a letter out of him, I'm gonna full nail someone, we get a letter. Um, it's now tape its conversation, but, um, and I have something, I have something for you guys next week. We'll, we'll go in with just an outline of some of the proposals on that. We still have to deal with animal husbandry in this issue, uh, we still have to deal with non-residential uses in the R one district. I think we've got it pretty much down, we did last time. The last non-residential use that we really approved was, uh, bed and breakfast. And we all agreed that bed and breakfast limited to three rooms was kind of absurd, so that's another thing we have to do. But that was the only non-residential use that we committed in the R one group. So that'll be available.
Do we have any Airbnb and Arundel, we didn't have, you see Kenny Bunk?
No, we've got them.
I bet you there's some.
I'm sure we do.
Oh, we do.
I'm sure we've got those, we've got the, uh, VBOs.
Same thing, yeah, it's, it's basically short-term rentals.
Yeah, pretty much the same. Yeah.
To go back here, it's a great one.
I'm surprised the local ends haven't, yeah.
Yes.
Come with torches and stakes.
It hasn't, it's not significant enough to cut it for the business.
Right, that's, no, I mean, do we have an abundance of local lodging?
We have no, we have, we have like seven motels, that's all we've got.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, so, I mean.
No, but they did a study, Jamie, it was really interesting, that Kenny Bunk and Kenny Bunkford, this past holiday season for Thanksgiving, they had like forty-five hundred.
Oh, I'm sure, Airbnb.
People, and I don't know how many bookings, but it was like a, an increase of over a quarter of a million dollars of revenue just.
Right. Right, I guess my, my thought is where you hear the, the, sort of the conflict between the Airbnb industry and the established lodging industry and looking to have some kind of regulation to, to protect the established lodging versus the Airbnb, you know, from the infringement of the.
It's like Uber taxi.
Yeah, right, where, whereas I guess my point was, we don't have a huge established lodging industry, so I, I don't know if that's something important to really tackle.
A lot of people say that the short-term rentals also change the personality of the neighborhood because you don't know who you're, who's staying next door to you, and so that there's a transient, but I think that has more to do with like Portland
Yeah.
and, you know, apartment buildings.
None of this is true, I'll tell you, our lighting consultant complained to me yesterday that, that he doesn't even know.
We just ban them on here.
Okay, Marty has a question for the.
He's a permanent resident, he's a permanent long, lifelong resident of Kenny Bunkport.
Marty has a question.
Yes, sir.
What are the selectmen doing?
Some are sleeping right now, but.
No, they had, they had turned on at the last, at a selectman meeting.
Oh, oh, they were sleeping, they must have been watching the video.
Of course. But see, they are, right now, what they did the last time is they, they approved the contract for Port City Architects and, uh, we're proceeding with, with designing the new town hall. They're also looking at putting up the, um, our, our piece of, our, our parcel, the former town hall site up for sale. In regards to the other thing, in regards to the, uh, the road construction or the private way, and road construction, uh, revisions, I have completed all the ones that, that the committee had approved, I have sent them out, or I should say Keith had sent them out.
To who?
To the members of the committee, should I get yours?
No.
Why not?
I have no idea, why not?
Interesting, okay, well, I'll say that I should send it to the plan, well, I'll send it to you, and maybe the planning board should all have a, have a copy of it as well. But this is my, this is my final product, this isn't, you know, the committee's gotta approve it and it's gotta go to the selectmen at their next meeting, probably, unless somebody finds, you know, an error or something I left out. And then we'll probably be looking at going, and this is something we've gotta consider in terms of our scheduling. It looks like they will be, they're shooting for having a special town meeting in February to deal with that, and we're gonna piggyback on some of our stuff on that, things we've passed already.
So they're gonna do something in February.
We've got a good public hearing in January.
Seventeenth, seventeenth of January is about the earliest.
I don't think they'll be ready by then. Well, I mean, if you figure I gotta advertise, I gotta go fourteen days, and I gotta know about it on the first, they're not gonna have a meeting till, I don't think they're gonna have another meeting till January. Which brings up the issue, how am I gonna get it in so less than.
It'll be January. Seventh, sixth or seventh before they have a meeting?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're usually three days ahead of us.
Yeah.
So.
Do we need to wait till they establish their meeting for us to have a public hearing?
Yes, they have to call.
They have to give it to us.
Have to give it to us and request us to do the public hearing.
Alright.
Then you guys have to have a meeting, actually, I don't know how we're gonna do this.
Yeah, why?
Have a meeting, and then you schedule the public hearing, then I've gotta advertise it, I've gotta advertise it fourteen, thirteen days prior to the meeting, twice, at thirteen and at seventeen, or at seven, and then you have your, your hearing and you, they render a, just send a, um, send a recommendation.
Why do we have to recommend it? Because they won't recommend it when we send stuff to them.
Well, because we have to.
No.
We have to, we have to propose the change in the ordinance.
Well, no, we, they don't, they're, they're, this is their ordinance as far as they're concerned.
Oh, the private way, right, yeah.
What they have to do is what the state statute is in forty-four oh one on this.
They don't consider this to be their ordinance, it most certainly is their ordinance.
Yes, they do.
I didn't say, I said they, they do consider. This is a selectman sponsored ordinance that they're forwarding to the planning board to meet the state notification of public hearing requirement. They do not do that, we do that, they do public, they do, because it's technically a land use ordinance, and therefore, therefore it has to go through all the procedures of forty-four oh one.
So our, our process is to either, we can send it to them with a recommendation that we approve, or one that says, no, we don't. And then they go from there, yeah.
They schedule it.
What, and then they.
And, yeah, we can't edit it.
They won't do any of it anyway. The other thing is out of the selectmen, they had something about setbacks.
Baywatch?
They said something out of the selectmen meeting, something about setbacks.
I don't know.
On their new business, on Stone Ridge Farms, I read that in, in, in the minutes, or the agenda.
All right, that's what we're getting to, yeah, um, Stone Ridge, what I've got right now is that Stone Ridge Farms, uh, is, wants to put the barn back up, and they are requesting, um, basically to revive the consent agreement that, that Fred Stone didn't sign originally, to revive that, and so that, uh, he can get in a consent agreement for, uh, his non-conforming setback from Curtis Row.
Who's helping him with that?
Yeah, I forget who's attorney, I guess, I'm not doing this, I'm out of this one.
So he would've signed the original consent agreement a decade ago, and now they wanna revive it and give it to him? Okay, as long as I understand it.
Well, Fred didn't fall through, that was a fall, and, and, and so now he says he will. So.
Okay.
So, um, I think, you know, he wants to get the barn. He was scouting on the weather.
Well. Can we move to adjourn?
Second to that motion?
I move that we adjourn.
We're done. Not debatable, but require a.